7:04, so this is the Duval City Council regularly scheduled meeting on July 21st, 2020, 7:04 PM. Would you please join me in the flag sleuth? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. And Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Bridenicki is not on quite yet. Councilmember Iyer.
Present.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Bridenicki. Councilmember Bridenicki, we're doing a call.
Oh, here.
Did I leave off? Councilmember McHenry. Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Here, Councilmember Lengel. Here, you have a call.
Excellent, thank you. Under additions and corrections to the agenda, under consent, please add payroll for July 20th, 2020, in the amount of $164,225.83, and claims for July 21st, 2020, in the amount of $565,590.84. And are there any council members that would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none. Hold on just a second and get back to the agenda here. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Second, Bridenicki.
Mayor Pretend Remington moves. Councilmember Bridenicki seconded to approve the council agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Michelle Hoag, second.
All right, Mayor Pretend Remington moved, and Councilmember Hoag seconded to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we will move on to comments from the audience. So first off, Clerk Wykoff, has anyone submitted any written comments this evening?
No, and I have enabled everyone to talk, so if anyone wants to speak, they can unmute them and do some more.
All right, so with that, do we have any members of the public that are on the line this evening that would like to speak? Going once, twice? All right, thank you guys for attending, especially via video, it's much appreciated. And with that, we will move on to our next item of business, and we'll go, start with the mayor's report. And we talked a lot during committee of the whole about, you know, the update on what's going on with COVID. We all know that we're at risk of moving backwards to a previous phase. In general, we've been working really diligently and fast on getting the city attorney contract ready, getting the small business grants ready, the next meeting will have our human services grant project for CARES Act ready to go, and keeping in touch with, you know, all of the organizations and other mayors from around the state, and trying to make sure we're all doing what we need to do. I think folks have already seen the draft AWC legislative agenda, if not, I'll make sure that gets out to folks. But we are kind of hitting that summer lull where some of our usual regional meetings will be canceled. So there probably won't be too much going on other than budget and policy work related to COVID for the next couple of months. So with that, I don't have anything else to share today. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. We did not have any council members that wanted to speak this evening, but do we have any council committees that would like to report? Councilmember Hoag.
We did have a finance administrative administration committee meeting on July 15th. Mayor O'Callander was there, Director Mason, Councilmember Lengel, Councilmember Napland. Our plan was to go over the procurement policy, but we had other items on the agenda, so we didn't get to our second procurement policy meeting yet. We did review the travel and meals policy, we reviewed the paid family medical leave, we reviewed small business assistance, and I felt like it was a really good meeting, good conversation. That's about it.
Any questions for Councilmember Hoag this evening? Seeing none, thank you for the report. And we'll move on to administration update. I'm not sure if Ms. Thomas has anything she hasn't shared already that she would like to this evening, but now is the opportunity.
I don't have anything else to report, it's been a busy week and a half, and so at the next meeting, we'll do a more robust administrative report, and I shared what I basically needed to at that meeting, although because we have a couple of additional members of the community because of increased, because of increased COVID cases, our services have gone back into a new phase, and so we, I'm not, sorry, we've modified internal procedures to protect, better protect our employees, and so we're working in groups essentially. For example, at City Hall, we have a Monday, Tuesday group, and our facility's clean on Wednesday, and then we have a Thursday, Friday group, and we're doing this because we have a really small city staff in general, and if an employee comes down with COVID, we just want to make sure it doesn't take an entire City Hall facility, because we need to obviously pay bills and take in money and continue to do city business. So I shared that earlier with our council, and so that's just a basic update, it was, that was all I was going to share this evening, thank you.
And it's good to see you back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and moving on to King County Fire District 45, and we have Chief David Burke from the Fire District with us evening, thank you for joining us. It's been a while since we've seen you, but it's been a little crazy the last six months. So looking forward to hear your update from Fire District 45.
Absolutely. Well, good evening, mayor, council, staff, and citizens. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you, it has been a while, and I apologize for that, but things have been busy, but busy different. As you've all been aware, the pandemic has been pretty trying for us, and as we evolved through the learning phase of how we were going to respond, react, et cetera, it's been an interesting growth of the organization and the membership. As we learned more and more about the virus, we became better and better prepared and more efficient at what we were doing, and I guess I should, I should thank staff and our commissioners, because about 13 years ago, they developed and implemented a pandemic policy that stockpiled supplies and provided training and things, and so I believe, while we were not fully prepared, but we were much ahead of the curve in a lot of ways. Some of the things that we've done, we took one of our reserve aid cars, we masked it off and dedicated it as a regional resource with our neighbors for COVID transports, and in doing so, it was staged, so if, if one of our neighbors, Woodenville or Carnation or Redmond, had a confirmed COVID transport, we would use just this unit with people specifically set up in PPE to facilitate that transport. And the key to that being successful is the actual knowledge of a potential COVID exposure from the very onset of the call. So as you can imagine, as we progress through this pandemic, educating our dispatchers and call takers to understand, you know, to ask the questions, you know, about your exposure, your temperature, your symptoms, any travel, all of those types of things. So it was an interesting learning environment, and I, and I have to say, I'm very proud of our people, both internally and regionally, for meeting the challenge. And despite the number of positive COVID cases that we have here in our area, we only had one little scare early in the system where we had self-isolation for a crew of two, and then after that, we've mitigated it very, very well, and we haven't had any confirmed exposures or transmissions to any of our folks, so that's a very good thing. As far as our station and our normal day-to-day operations, we are deemed essential, and much like the city, we have to pay bills, we have to take care of regular business, so we have all of our work staff back, but our office is technically closed to the public. And this is painful for us, because a lot of what we do and the way we interact, we enjoy meeting with the, with the community and having the tours and things like that, so it's been kind of a social challenge for us, because it sounds selfish, but we gained so much from interacting with the public, and now we're limited to just calls and business, if you will. So we're looking forward to that time where we go back to whatever the new normal's going to be, and we're able to host tours and people inside the station. Like Laura was mentioning, some of the things we've done for our employees, because our classroom is no longer available for use, we have partitioned it in such a way that we have scattered out all of our employees, where everybody has their own individual space, and we are masked, dependent inside the station and maintaining six feet, and so we've done a couple of other things. You might not have seen the aid car at the grocery store since January, and that's by direction. We don't want anybody to think that the, that people in the aid car are inside the store or, or out in public other than on a call, we use the engine for that type of stuff. I guess we're, we're doing the best we can in the circumstances that we have, and, and I have to put in a good plug for the community, because in the calls that we've run, in the communications we've had with people on calls and, and calling on the phone, as well as interactions out in public, people are generally doing the right thing, and I am very grateful for that, because there's a lot of places where they are not doing the right thing. So, so to the community, and I'm, and I'm not saying everybody's perfect or anything like that, but the case is, as it stands in our response area, our people are doing very well. So unfortunate in circumstance, as well as timing and everything else, we had a huge loss to our extended family membership in that one of our career firefighters here, his brother was the police officer slain in Bothell a week or so ago. And so we've been rallying behind our employee and his family, trying to make sure that we're supporting the family, and as they continue to grieve and, and deal with what that's going to be. I guess, related to call volume, like the rest of the nation, generally speaking, our call volume is down about 25%. Depending on who you talk to, the national trend is that a lot of people are apprehensive and they're not calling for the casual trips to the hospital, the sprained ankles, et cetera, and the general feeling is most people don't want to go to the hospital unless they have to. We've initiated a little bit of a, of a community outreach to make sure, to remind people that if you are having some type of medical emergency, please don't delay, case in point, chest pain, and one of those things that can worsen, so we're really trying to work with the community and a, and a limited social media platform, just to remind them that if you are having an emergency, we are open for business and we'll be happy to come take care of you. Interesting also, in our call numbers, we are not running that many, a very, very small percentage of COVID symptom-based calls, and I would, I would say, if we have one in a week, that is probably, probably a large amount, because there's, there's just not that many, which is, is a thing that we're celebrating. I've been contacted by the county and asked about everything from scenes of violence and, and I guess, stress-related type calls, and I haven't seen any of those types of upticks either. Related to the scenes of violence, our crews participated as a strike team member, standing by for Bellevue and Seattle at the onset of some of the civil unrest and the protests that were going on there. We were standby only, we, myself and the deputy chief, we were in line to participate as overhead, but neither of the resources were called, so we tried to help the region but weren't needed beyond that. Let's see, the other thing that I can tell you in general terms is, our new station is still under construction with a targeted opening this fall. We are starting to really get into the final details, the building is dried in, and that will directly benefit the city of Duval, as the, it'll lessen the response time for a second due unit by at least five minutes. So very good things there. As part of that, we will have a few promotions, and we are looking at hiring three new career firefighters, probably November 1st, so we'll be posting for that soon, so if you know somebody that's interested and qualified, please direct them to national testing, and we'd be happy to have them considered in that opportunity. And because it's been such a long time, and I know I've probably talked a little more than normal, but I guess I'd really like to encourage council, in my absence, what questions do you have? What have I missed? And I've tried to give you just a, a high overview of where we are and what we're doing, but I would certainly welcome any questions at this time. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. This is not COVID-related, but it, so it's, it's something from the way back, which is that Duval's experiencing a lot of construction activity and a lot of requests for permits, and the last update that I had was, there had been a change within District 45 with respect to whether someone was certified to do our building inspections for fire, and, you know, this is a real obstacle, potentially, in our building process, and of course, it's to everyone's advantage to keep those sales going, build that property tax base and whatnot. So I guess my question is, in the hiring that you've already completed, or in the recruitment that you're doing now, or with existing staff, will you be replenishing someone on your staff that is certified to do those building inspections?
Okay, excellent question, and let me start by saying, I'm sorry, I should have probably led with something like that, because we have hired somebody in that role. We created, I guess, we combined two part-time positions into a full-time, and the mashup is a little unusual, because we had a halftime maintenance position that retired, and then we had kind of a piece of our deputy chief that was doing the inspections previous, and so with the Board of Fire Commissioners' support, we put those together, and I created a full-time equivalent, that is a maintenance inspector position, and we've hired that. We brought John McKinnon on, on March 15th, and we have had him training with your contract agency in Woodenville with, with the fire marshal there, and he is working on those certifications now. He has been participating in inspections for experience, as well as training with Barry, and so we're hopeful to stand him up independently as soon as possible to your question.
Well, thank you very much, because we want to make sure that those processes go very smoothly. A lot of stuff in the pipeline, we want to make sure our community development department is fully supported, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just go to say that the board, when I took the message back to them, they were very supportive, and again, the, everything aligned right, where we could bring somebody that had experience with the city of Redmond, you know, and, and some building and some plat work and things like that, and a degree that really came together, and so he's really sharp, doing very well, and so we're working on that. Now, with the limitations of, of the pandemic and COVID, you know, the experience is a little slow in coming, and some of the training that we need is not as available, but, but we're doing the best we can to, or with respect to what your ask is, is keeping the inspections moving.
Chief Mike Remington?
Yes, sir.
A couple items, one, I'm really excited to hear about, potentially have inspections done here, I think it is such a great partnership that we've had in the past, and be able to get somebody up and running, that's a, a big chore, and we appreciate hearing that. Also, I just want to say thank you for, during this difficult time in our lives with COVID-19, that you're still out there responding to calls and taking care of people, and, and that adds some risk, so we truly appreciate all that you're doing for our community. And then finally, I just wanted to recognize, as you said on July 13th, that Jonathan Shupid lost his life in Bothell. So much goes on with emergency services and with police now, and we forget that side that, very few jobs where you leave home and, and realize that you may not come back. But please pass along our deep appreciation to our fire department family, to Jared, our firefighter, that lost his brother.
I genuinely appreciate that, and I have shared that, and so many of you from the city, both council staff, et cetera, have reached out, and we are so grateful for that, and it, it's times like these that, that you really lean on the people that you work with and that you're close to, and, and we're grateful for that relationship, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anybody else? Well, again, I, I appreciate the opportunity to share some information, I apologize for the, for the gap, and it's, it's my hope to be regular, whether virtual or otherwise, in your meetings up and coming, now that we've, I guess, somewhat stabilized with the pandemic a little bit, it's a little bit easier for me. So thank you for the opportunity, and reach out if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Chief Burke, much appreciated. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Next up, we do not have a presentation or a public hearing, so our first item of new business is Agenda Bill 20-61, the resolution for paid family medical leave policy for discussion and/or decision. Ms. Mason, this is your item. You're on mute, Ms. Mason.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. Dana Mason, Finance Director. So Washington State's paid family medical leave is funded by premiums paid for this, by the cities and its employees that have been collected since January of 2019. Leave benefits became eligible for use on January 1st, 2020. Most of the city's policy that, you know, has been presented to council is informational for employees to understand the program and their benefits. However, since the law surrounding paid family medical leave says that employees may allow, or employers may allow employees to supplement their benefits with accrued leave, the city needs to decide if it wants to allow its employees to supplement or not. So the policy is written without allowing employees to supplement their accrued leave, though the paid family medical leave with accrued leave. If council wishes to allow employees to supplement their paid family medical leave with accrued leave, there are a few options, and the template, the policy that's before you is actually from a template that some law provided for its clients, and then the city's attorney went over it and made some adjustments. But the options, if council wishes to allow employee to supplement the leave, is that it could allow employees to top off their paid family medical leave with accrued leave, so they're getting their regular pay, and that would be done after the paid family medical leave is received. Council could allow employees to use accrued leave, and then once they receive their paid family medical leave benefit, they could buy back their accrued leave from the city, or council could allow employees to use their accrued leave up to a specific amount each week, or council could allow employees to use their accrued leave in accordance with city leave policy without considering paid family medical leave, so it'd just be on top of that. So, and this is, this is an item that's for discussion or action, like the mayor said, and we do have a one employee who has applied for paid family medical leave, but it's not for a little while, the leave isn't for a while, so we do have a little bit of time to discuss this. Does anyone have any questions or feedback?
Well, Ms. Mason, I just want to put my, just put out my preference there, is, just kind of a little bit of background, is, you know, my preference is that we do allow using accruals, as accrued leave is supplemental, and part of the reason why is that if you're not getting your full paycheck, you know, we have a lot of employees that may be living on a single income or have trouble making ends meet, and specifically, if you have a baby or have cancer or something like that, your medical costs are going to be high to begin with, if you're taking that medical leave for those types of reasons, and I want to make sure that they're as whole as they can be while they're out on their leave, so that they can take the time necessary and not have as many financial worries and come back to work whole. So, you know, is, that's part of my goal in this process, is to make sure that they're not, that there's a way for them to, to receive the, their normal amount of money, even if it's using their accrued leave, so that they can just function. You know, I know firsthand that taking medical leave and FMLA, FMLA is not funded, your accounts dry down real quickly, and especially for parents, it makes it very difficult to stay employed if you don't have additional options, and the longer you can have flexibility throughout the program, the more likely you are to be able to return to work full-time. So just, that's just the information, there was a great conversation at the Finance Committee, but I wanted to make sure council knew where I was coming from on this and my preference before you had your conversation. And with that, questions, feedback?
Councilmember Lengel.
Yeah, I, I thought about this a lot, and, and saying upfront that my personal experience being employed and having a child has no relationship to any of this, but the first thing that I just want to put out there, right upfront, because I try to do that, is that it's, as I understand this, and I've talked to Director Mason about this, is there's this, this language embedded in Duval's code, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Mason, but where we may require employees to pay back their health benefit during a time of incapacitation. Now, I have a real problem with that, and I'll tell you why. These are our employees, they're still on our books, and, you know, it seems to me, there's always a risk that employees won't come back, but it should not be something that's tied to their health benefits, particularly since we're talking about periods of time when they may be adding a family member, or having other needs themselves at the same time, I mean, I mean envisioning, I mean, I've had cancer, and I can't imagine being at the end of my employment and not being able to continue and having to pay back my health benefits, and I realize there's some exceptions built into our, our code, but it just seems that that surety, that I would not have to pay back my health benefits, is, is really a commitment to our employees, it's a sign of grace, and it seems almost like if we, if we went down that path, it almost seems a little punitive, and, and all the times I've employed people, I've always found that a little bit of grace also engenders loyalty, and that is one thing I feel very strongly about. With respect to supplements, you know, there's several different options on that, I'll let that up to the broader discussion, but if there is to be supplements, I think it's fair to say that, as implementing this policy, and I do think there should be some type of policy, it's okay for us to think incrementally, and I say that because this, as it's been described by councilmember, I mean, not councilmember, Director Mason, this is something that's, you know, in a lot of flux, which is why a lot of jurisdictions are sort of sitting back in the sidelines on it, and I get that, I respect that. So I do think incremental statements, steps are not a bad idea. The one thing, when I've developed my thinking about this, that I really did not think about, was actually something that the AWC just released, Association of Washington Cities, and there are a lot of employment requirements that are changing in this state, that have taken effect recently with respect to employees, and we don't really know what the financial implications of that are, so with that caveat, we might want to even go a little slower in how we look at things in this policy, and just a reminder, it's a policy, council can change policy, and we have a lot of stuff happening right now, we've got, you know, the salary, whole thing evaluation, we've already changed a few things under ordinance about how we work with our employees, so my pitch there is that we have to remember, whatever we do now, council makes policy, we can change policy, and then the last thing that I didn't see in council, in Director Mason's write-up, which, you should jump in now, Dana, if I'm not seeing this, because maybe I missed it, is that currently what we do under this is we pay two-thirds of the employee premium, and they pay one-third, and what the statute requires is that the employer pay one-third, and the employee And what the statute requires is that the employer pay one third and the employee pay two thirds. So, you know, we are doing a little bit right now. And I just thought for the, you know, the fact check, as they say, it might be good to put that one out there.
And that is something that can be negotiated during the upcoming negotiations with the Teamsters and the FOP.
And as referenced, that was in the latest contract extension of the FOP. So that was council approved in that process.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So it and it was specific in the contract that that was to be collectively the the. The rate was to be collective bargained during upcoming negotiations. So to your point, we will be able to bargain that.
Well, that's all I have to say. It's to, you know.
You and I had a great conversation. We're on that same page with the repayment of benefits. It's just.
It's it's just really hard for me to accept that one and.
I can't.
I mean, I was very fortunate in my situation, but I know a lot of people aren't. I've been on. Boards of childcare centers. You know, if you have a, I'll just speak to the women's issue. Well, it's not just a woman's issue, it's a family issue. If you have a child and you want to go back to work. Infant childcare has a huge price tag. And so I'll just remind anybody that hasn't had a child in it for a while. I didn't have that problem, but lots of other people do.
Any other council members with questions or ideas of which options you prefer? Because that's that's really. You know, we we do have a little bit of time to get this done, but we do have an employee that's likely to be going out soon. So if we don't have a policy. It makes it more difficult and essentially what some other cities have done is simply just let the employee choose what they want to do. Councilmember Iyer.
Yeah, actually kind of have, I guess, a unique perspective. I'm. Utilizing this program through my employer currently and to. To bond with my and to care for my. My baby, who's right there. So, you know, it's been interesting. It's definitely been a. Benefit to my family and, I mean, the the. The program itself and, you know, it's been a huge benefit mostly for my wife at this point to utilize. She works for U-Dub, which is a very large agency, obviously, with. A much bigger footprint. And so. It's a very positive experience in terms of the the core program. I mean, the, and I think in terms of, you know, folks, I I asked my wife about this and she said, well, it's, you know, it's their benefits. And I definitely agree, but I think the the.
Councilmember Iyer, your audio went haywire there for a second. I think I think you might need to keep the baby monitor a little farther from the computer.
What I was saying.
There you go. There you go.
Sorry, must be on some special frequency here. Okay. So what I was saying is that, yes, my wife's on the pro in the program, but the one unique thing that we have to consider, I think, is, you know. The city Duval's footprint is a lot smaller than a larger agency in terms of like. Managing. The logistics of. Of. You know. The backend of keeping track of the hours. I I kind of go back to thinking of the changes that occurred in the. Sick leave in the last year. That represented a real kind of like another hoop for everybody to jump through, you know, employers to jump through and. I guess with the varying different. Complexities of options, I think they come with different complexities of tracking and essentially functions of, you know, where the city is. Doing additional legwork in terms of each employee's leave, leave banks balancing, monitoring the usage every week while they're on leave. And I think. That's something that definitely needs to be considered that and and also. In consideration where, you know, once, you know. And I guess maybe this is a question. I mean, so once you, you know, say you you just air in this. You. You know, it sounds like the city's been pretty generous up till this point. And. In terms of their, the the management choices they've made. That, I mean, the question becomes, you know, like that two thirds, does that become standard practice at that point? When you make a general decision. I mean, does that become a standard practice? And then so if you, if were to make a choice here, I mean. At that point, does it become something that must be must be negotiated backwards if you. Were in such a position that you felt you needed to. And that's that's one of the. That's one of the considerations that I think should be thought about. As we move forward and so. And I don't know if somebody can answer those questions. I mean, so you say, yes, you can.
We can.
Your leave in and then take it, take your leave simultaneously while you collect money from the state. You know, or it's a supplement, you supplement a hundred percent of your leave that day. I mean, I just, interesting to to know. It would have been great if my employer did that. It would have been nice. I probably would have taken the full twelve weeks off to bond. But it was, it is. In my circumstance, it represented a. A pay cut, so I'm using it sparingly where we can afford to. Take some of that additional time without using up all my vacations. So. So those are my questions, I guess, so.
So I can address the two thirds issue and. Regardless, it can be collective bargaining. So what we have now is two thirds, but it was contingent upon, you know, no guarantee, you know, clear that it was agreement, no guarantees. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dana, but the entire city cost is a difference of five thousand dollars total.
Yes.
So the the dollar amount is small. And. I've lost my train of thought on the other questions. I apologize. But in in those two, those two instances, it's. It's a small amount of money, but it is a bargainable issue. So even if council passes a policy that says one third today, you know, if council were to pass it today. In collective bargaining, the unions have a right to use that as a negotiating tool, just like they do any other benefit or wage. So. There's nothing that precludes them from doing that. But to your point, it is if once it is in the bargaining contract, it is harder to roll it back.
Well, and that's that's kind of my point is that. Once you, you know, move forward, then it's, you know, I I mean, my understanding that some of those things are. Practice, you know, past practices and become, you know, more. Standard of expectations. So I mean, I think. That's a consideration. And then also, you know, where we're at with the. You know, I don't know if we're if we're looking at overall leave policy changes, if how this fits in. Generally, I'm supportive of it, but I would like to understand. The cost to the city of maintaining a program in addition to all the other HR tracking that we're that we're doing.
Well, I I mean, it would take some, so if we did do one of the first two, the top off, I think it would be. You know, cost the money administratively, the city money administratively would take finance time for us to track. But, you know, again, we don't have, we don't probably don't have a lot of employees doing this at once. So. There's a positive right there. If we allow the employee to. Just take the leave when they wanted it to, wanted to, so just on top of their paid family medical leave. That at least, I mean, one advantage would be that they would be spending down their accrued leave balance. And kind of taking that liability off the books for for the city. So that could be a real positive.
I remembered what I was going to address and that's the. The liability issue. And one of the things that the Finance Committee discussed is. The fact that you might have somebody gone for sixteen weeks or even a year, just depending on what the situation is. And, you know, whatever leave policy we pass, my expectation is that we would build. Build into the budget so that we could handle the backfilling of those positions temporarily during that time of leave. Just like we did with our last biennial budget and starting to accommodate for the liabilities of, more so for the liabilities of. You know, the regular attrition rate of a city. My intent would be regardless to start planning for making sure that we have the funds available to have that temporary staffing in place. When we have somebody that's out long term so that we can keep up on our work and it doesn't decrease. You know, or doesn't put the burden too much on others. Part of that conversation was also about the fact that our employees are extraordinarily dedicated. So you have people right now, if we weren't in COVID, that would be coming to work sick. And they shouldn't be doing that and they should be able to feel the space and grace to be able to take that time off. Especially, you know, to your point, Councilmember Iyer, you're you're, you just mentioned a pay cut while you're. Helping bond with your newborn. And so we, I think that we can find ways to make that happen. So it's not. A shock on our budget when people do use that leave. Yep.
I guess my. My only reservation is good faith is great, but I think. It's something that I think the timing is. I would prefer to go with supplementation, but, you know, I guess, you know. I think there's some consideration of where you're going to be at at the end of this year, what things you're going to be discussing. With the union at the end of the year and once you. Like I said, to my point, once you, once you, once you pay two thirds, it's a, it's a practice and it becomes. Thing to that you that you put out there. So. I I like the idea of. Considering, you know, doing the supplementation, but I think, I think if we did it before. The next contract, I think it should be, I think, and I I don't know how to do this. I don't speak to you offline too much, Mayor. So I'm just going to do it here in in the general forum, which is probably not the greatest place, but I think. Generally, I think if we do proceed that it should be. Written in a way that it's not, it's not considered a forever practice and that it could be reconsidered without. Any sort of. You know, accommodation being considered after the fact that I think we consider it a pilot program possibly looking at our. Expenses to manage and operate. I think that that's a reasonable approach. And then at that point, I guess I really don't. Have a too big of a concern about what option. I think part of me thinks the whole, the double dipping one seems. Untoward, but I could also see it's like, okay, great. It's less management for the city to to manage and really doesn't expose the city to any additional expense than they would be. Stuck with otherwise, so burdened with otherwise. So. That's where I'm at.
Councilmember Napland.
So we did have a great conversation about this at our finance meeting and I was. I I didn't realize we were, I thought it was a procurement policy meeting and so I I wasn't. So it was our first, our first look at it, which, you know, it happens. It's okay. It was our first look at it and I hadn't really formulated an opinion. I need to do a little more. Research on it and. And after further thought and looking at, looking at, you know, what are other cities doing? What is some advice that I've seen other legal firms give to employers as they try to make this decision? And I think one of the common threads was you really need to look at this decision in context of what leaves you already are offering and. How that can integrate and some suggestions that, you know, our leave policy was built without this. Something there. And so you really, as we look at our leave, it could be, and there have been talk in the past about, you know, do we contemplate restructuring? I think it's called ETO instead of, you know, so you combine like in vacation. So we've had a lot of conversations about this and so I started thinking more about it and I. As someone who, you know, I've had three children, I have two of them, I was working and I did take leave and I I did have to use my. Accrued leave and I think I had some short term disability, but. I I do think it's important that when people have children that they have. And that they need and for fathers to have time with their. Or significant others have time with their new children. So. With all that said, I I really appreciate the idea that Councilmember Iyer came up with that we we contemplate a pilot program that potentially could allow supplementation. But only it would expire at the end of this year. And then as we get the compensation study, kind of see what other cities are doing, we have our negotiations with the union to talk about. Things I would really like to see this expire and not become, well, this is now just how we do it, that it really be something that we can look at. And not make a decision going forward forever. And I and I know we can always, you know, change in the future, but as Councilmember Iyer said, you know, kind of once you set something in, it's. It's a little bit trickier to say, oh, well, never mind. But I. But having something expire will really put us into a situation where we contemplate how this works. With the other leave that we offer because we created our sick leave and how much balances people can carry kind of without. This option being available. And now that this option is here, it really allows you to stretch your sick leave and vacation leave to very long amounts of time. And so just trying to understand how those integrate and. I think it would be a good conversation to have and just the fact that at the end of this year, we're. Going into negotiations with the union, we're also having a compensation study and I believe. With the compensation study, they also look at what benefits are offered when they look at other cities and they do comparisons, maybe Director Thomas, I see you shaking your head. Is that correct? That we will be looking and seeing kind of how that works. And also, we don't really know how much it'll be utilized. It's really a new program. It does expand the ability for people to take time off. And so a pilot through the end of the year to allow, I I think option A was. Just a straightforward topping it off. Is that correct, Dana? I don't have the.
It was, yeah. Where they, yeah.
And so that could give us, you know, get our feet wet on it and, you know, we can see, well, how much work is this to try to coordinate this? How often is it being utilized? I just, I really like that idea that Councilmember Iyer came up with and. I would be supportive of that.
All right, we haven't heard from Councilmembers Bernicki, McHenry or Remington. Councilmember McHenry.
So, um, yeah, Councilmember Iyer brought up a really great point and and I like that idea of potentially a pilot program. I was looking between options one and two. Those are what I lean towards and I guess I'm not totally clear on the pros or cons of one versus two. It seems like. Is there a difference or I see the difference, but I mean administratively or in terms of costs? I mean, what what is the real? Change there for us as a city?
So one of them, they would come to us with their PFMLA check or PFL check. And say, this is how much we received. Can you top me off, true me up with accrued leave? The other one, we paid them their accrued leave for that week and then they bring their check to us and buy back their accrued leave.
So is.
So they to get to get it back. Yeah.
It it ends the same in terms of how much they're getting, correct?
It's, it does.
But so which one's easier for the city in terms of paperwork and number one? Okay, that's.
Councilmember Bernicki or Mayor President Remington or Councilmember Hoag?
So I'm fine with option one after thinking about it and you did, the cost was not as. Great as I thought. So what is the five thousand approximate number? How does, how is that figured out in the cost?
Five thousand?
Yeah, somebody mentioned about.
I might have gotten the number wrong, Dana.
No, you're you're right. So what happens is the city, there. No, you're, you're right. So what happens is the city, there's a premium that we pay every paycheck and it goes to the ESD. We pay it right to them. Traditionally, the city would pay one third and the employee would pay two third. But since when this was a new program that was coming in, negotiations, I believe were in process and we, the city agreed to pay two thirds instead of one third. So we're paying two thirds, the employee is paying one third. And the, the cost to the city for the whole two thirds is about $10,000 a year. So really we're paying $5,000 more per year than we would if the employee was paying it. If the employee was paying two thirds and we are paying one third, we, we would save about $5,000.
Well, considering, you know, we can always amend and change if we don't agree or we find that it's not going to fit within our budgetary goals. So I'm fine with where it stands as it is. I I don't know if I'm into the idea of a pilot program. And the reason for that is, you know, maybe it has to be a longer period because one year we'll be back to this conversation for shortly again. And I don't know that we'll have enough measurables to really understand to make a decision. So we're going to go through this process again. And I feel it's better to sort of go through the process, see, keep track. I'm sure finance will come back to us if there are any red flags or we think we're not able to support a project like this. And then at that point, it can be brought to the committee, it can be discussed and we can decide what we're going to do versus after, you know, in one year we have to come back, but we still don't have answers. We still need to observe some more or find, do more research. So I'm, I'm fine with moving forward and sort of keeping track of how the program works and beneficial. I mean, in the past, when we used to talk about programs and things for the workers of the city, you know, we always considered the, the best that we could possibly do for them. So in considering that, I would agree with Councilmember Lingel in her philosophical explanation that she pointed out about all of this. So that's my contribution.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Remington or Councilmember Hoag?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Oh, go ahead, Michelle.
I, I still, I feel like I need more time to absorb this. I'm really appreciated hearing from Councilmember Iyer. I thought he would have some good insight on this. And I just, I, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Lingel on, on paying back. I just think that's, that's a big request. I just think that that's, I, I don't, I, it doesn't feel good to me. So those are just my thoughts. I still feel like I need time to think it through. I don't feel like it's something I personally could vote on tonight, but yeah, that's it.
Mayor Protem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a great conversation. Some of the most confusing and challenging things you ever face are a lot of these unfunded mandates that come through, whether it's paid leaves, FMLA, childcare leave. All those are important to employees. I feel really fortunate here in Duval that we have a good benefit package for folks. When the state or federal government comes through with a new mandate, you just adopt it. We don't have any choice, but in this particular one, they give you options, things that you can change. So that's why our discussion tonight, fundamentally, I'm fine with allowing employees to supplement. It's something they've already earned. They're just saying, I like to use it to be whole at a time they have a need. So I, I think I could support that. Not being required to pay it back, especially into one's career. I could see that that would be beneficial and something that we could easily do. The balance for me is, you know, and just upfront, what I would recommend is that we adopt the minimum the state has so that we're meeting the requirement and then let the rest fall into negotiations. Employee compensation is a total compensation package. It doesn't just look at wage. It looks at, you know, all of your benefits and this is one of those benefits. That way you get an opportunity to, to negotiate it, to balance out the overall cost of what we're doing for employees. That may sound a bit hard in some ways for, for some folks, but it actually is the practical way to do this. You sit down and, and look at your comparables and, and look at not just your wages, but, but all the other things that go along with it with benefits. And then you have the total compensation package. When you start to get a field with one of these, it's really tougher on negotiators. It doesn't mean we can't do it. There's nothing illegal about saying, yeah, let's, you know, give it as much as we can. And we have great employees. I think that we should be supporting them and providing as much as, you know, we can practically afford. But with negotiations, you know, I just say it upfront, it's all about leverage and you don't want to you know, try to do things outside of that negotiation table when you can. The other part I'll just share with this is that the state was providing this because there's a lot of employees, they don't have options. You know, they got FMLA, but with FMLA, you know, you don't get paid. You get to leave for 12 weeks. I'm, I'm actually more concerned that we have designed in the system that we run things concurrently. So that, and, and it was really designed into the, the legislation to allow us to do that. So that if somebody is taking this, you can also say, we're beginning your FMLA now so that you don't get 12 weeks of leave and then you come back and now I got 12 weeks of FMLA. By the way, I've got some other vacation and, you know, and pretty soon it's like, whoa, where to go? Not because we don't want to take care of employees, but we also need to take care of a budget and you have some control in it. So my personal preference again would be let's adopt the minimum that the state requires and let's sit down with the employees. They may have other things they want that are more important and say, look, we already have FMLA and sick leave and vacation time that we're fine. You know, we, we want this, something else. So I don't want to presume that we know what they want. You know, and, and $5,000 is not a huge amount, but I do think that we need to be careful because all those little bits add up in negotiations. So, you know, again, I, I think we ought to, to pass it and leave the rest for negotiations.
Director Mason and then Councilmember Lingel and Councilmember Napland.
So I did, I did want to point out that in the policy, it just says the funded, there's no percentages in the policy. So it doesn't say that the city is going to pay a third and the, the employee is going to pay two thirds or vice versa. It just says that the premium rate is established by the law and if it's modified, it's subject to change basically through the law. So.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lingel?
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I always like to try to keep track of these things, right? So someone needs to correct me if I'm not tracking this. There's, there's two pieces. One is this premium issue, which is, I don't want us to get them confused in our mind. The premium issue is by law, we pay one third, employees pay two thirds. Right now we're paying two thirds, they're paying one third. That's kind of one little bucket of how this all works. The bigger, there's the, the bigger bucket has two components. And one component, I, I don't, obviously I have a bias here, is one component which is embedded in Duval's existing policy. Diane, Dana, you correct me if I'm wrong, has to do with whether people have to pay back their health benefits. So that's a component. I'll stop.
Okay. So I just wanted to let you know that that's, that's in Duval code under FMLA. So it doesn't have anything to do with the, I added it to the policy because it was part of FM and melee, but we can take that out, no problem.
Right. That's exactly why, that's why I wanted you to help me through this. Now, so that's like a, this little piece in all of this that is completely related to Duval and whether it's in or it's out. Do I have that right?
Yes. And we can actually, for FMLA, we, I believe we can modify the code. I mean, we don't have to require, I don't believe we have to require. Just as we may, so.
Yeah. And I think, and under, you know, my previous employment, the FMLA program, it depended on how many hours you worked, if you had to pay the benefits while you're using partial FMLA. But I, I agree, you know, if somebody's out sick, you shouldn't be requiring to pay.
So, and then the other piece in the bucket, the big bucket, has to do with these four options. And whether or not we pick any of those options as we proceed for forward, whether or not we have a pilot program or not, or whether or not, you know, this whole thing really goes into an integrated package. I think this is what I'm hearing when I hear around the table. And with, with, I guess, the, it's not an exception with the, the special, a personal report from Councilmember Iyer, which is very helpful right now because this, this real life kind of thing happening. And, and so last, to Councilmember Hoag's point, we probably need to think about this a little bit more. It sounds like we might have a little bit more time to kind of digest it all, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping that what I heard is enough sensitivity to the health benefit, that that is at least still on the table as something to think about. It sounds a little bit like maybe, you know, there's a lot of back and forth on pilot program. But I'll tell you, you know, when I first was at FNA and I thought about this, I was much more, oh yeah, supplement. I didn't know, I wasn't really, honestly, I really wasn't integrating that with the fact that we have a salary study going on. We have union negotiations going on, you know, there was just a lot of different things I was really not thinking through and I got to own that. But they're worth really thinking about. And, and then the last again is reminding us all, the state keeps messing around with this. I mean, we don't have any way of knowing what they're going to do a year from now in all this interpretation. So whether we do a pilot or not, that's going to be in flux, no matter how we play this out. The only concrete thing for sure is that union negotiation and the other piece to that, of course, is how much money do we have? You know, there's a lot going on with the COVID revenues. We're doing fine so far. Next year is a complete unknown. And we have other competing things going on and, you know, I don't think anybody has expressed a desire to lose employees in this process of budget restraint. So that's kind of what I, I'm trying to bring this all around. And I know I'm probably talking too much, so I'll apologize on that. But it isn't, it, it, at first I really thought it was much more simple than it is. And, and that's why I came down on the one thing that was really important in my mind, which was the health benefits.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingel. Councilmember Napland was next, and then it looks like Councilmember Iyer wants to speak as well. Councilmember Napland, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Um, so I just wanted to say how much I appreciate this council and I learned so much by listening to what my fellow council members share based on their life experience and wisdom and Councilmember Remington, I, I really need to defer to your experience of what is best when you enter into a situation of negotiation. And I just really appreciate that feedback and you know, having more time to think about this, I think is good. I, I would really like to wait until the next meeting to, to try to make a decision. But at this point, hearing more input, I, I do feel like I'm leaning towards having a further conversation at the time we negotiate the union contract and the minimum requirement allows employees to fully use the leave that they've always had and it does not take anything away from them. They always have the option to, if they use all of their leave, or even if they don't want to use all their leave, they can go and have access to, it's, I believe up to $1,000 a week depending on, so it's 90% of your typical pay up to about $1,000 a week. So you always have access to all of your leave. Plus, if you run out of that, you still get a thou, you would still have access to $1,000 a day expanded benefit using this new program. So I, I do, I, I do feel like I'm leaning towards just approving a, the default, which is not allowing supplementation. And then we can have a further conversation to find out what do the employees feel is important. And anyway.
Thank you. Councilmember Iyer?
Yeah, definitely. I, I too respect the perspective and I I'm an employee that at worst haven't done, I had to be not at a high level.
Council, you went on mute, you were garbled and then you went on mute. I don't know if it was my connection or if you were garbled the whole time. Would you like to try again? You're on mute now.
It's, it's broke.
Okay, now it sounds fine.
Oh, hey, hey. Just a really compelling speech. It was riveting. Kids came up and clapped. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I, I apologize for that. Yeah.
We're dealing with technology issues everywhere.
I'll try to keep it short. I was thinking we'd get out of here at decent time, but I guess it's a good conversation. I appreciate the thoughtfulness. I do appreciate, you know, my, Ms. Councilmember Remington's experience. You know, I work at a city, but you know, by no means am I working in the upper echelons of, you know, all the negotiations and the, the ins and outs of the process. And that seems like an intelligent approach. And I guess he's braver than I am. And so I appreciate that. But then also just as a, a public employee, I mean, some of these incremental things do seem small, but you know, I always think about when I'm at work, you know, I, I try to think about, there's, I mean, it's a great job and we work really hard and care a lot. And I can see that and that happens in Duval as well. But there also is the, the private sector that pays for a lot of the stuff. And every $5,000 that we see in the city is really represented by orders of magnitude of business that occurs outside of the city that makes that $5,000. And just trying to be good stewards as much as possible, not, this is, isn't a good endeavor, but and that's what I try to think about when, when I approach even the, some of these amounts that don't seem so, so I guess I was, I'm waffling a little bit. So I apologize and I'm done.
Councilmember McHenry?
Sorry. Um, I really appreciate the different perspectives. I've heard, brought up things I hadn't quite thought about and I'd like a little more time to think about it. A few people have mentioned maybe at the next meeting and I just wanted to check if we're looking at next meeting in terms of the 28th.
So it could be, it's a special meeting. So if council wants it on the 28th, we can put it on the 28th. If you think you'll be ready to make a decision by then. You know, we recognize that this is just one of those policies that it's again, where we have to get it done. We have to get it done quickly. And time is short and it is complex. So if council would like to have it on the 28th and feels like you'll be ready to vote, we can put it on that meeting. Otherwise it'll be at the first one in August, but we do have an employee set to likely take that leave very soon, potentially either before or right after that first August meeting. So I guess what I'd like to hear from, it was a good point, my Councilmember Henry, do folks, do folks feel like you'll be ready to vote on this by next Tuesday? Councilmember Napland?
I just want to say, whether we're ready to vote on it or not, one more touch might not hurt it. And so, either way, maybe we'll be ready, even if we weren't, aren't, it's one more touch if we need it. And so, because we wouldn't want to get, say, oh, I don't know, and then at the first meeting in August, we still have an open thing. So just one more touch might be helpful, and then maybe we can wrap it up at the next meeting. But I don't think it would hurt if we're already meeting, just have a quick touch.
Okay, we'll add it to the agenda. All right, so, good discussion, folks, thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda bill, AB 20-62, the resolution for CARES Act funding small business grants, for discussion and/or decision. And just before we get into the discussion, you know, this program was developed based on what other cities have done. And other cities, actually, we were on a mayor's call with Snoqualmie this morning discussing their program, and they did it very differently. They did it specifically through the emergency order, and just had a resolution passed by council and administration, handled everything on the, the outside. But we have some opportunities here, and I will let Ms. Mason take it away. You're on mute. Dana, you're on mute.
All right. There we go. So, good evening, council. Let me just move my thing over. So, the city recently found out it might receive about $12,000 in CARES Act funding for small businesses affected by the COVID crisis through King County. In addition, the city has about $130,000 in CARES Act funds from the Washington State Department of Commerce that could also be used to support small businesses or possibly human services. So staff put together a small business assistant program to help distribute the funds using programs from Snoqualmie and also Federal Way as an example. An updated program guidelines application, and the resolution was sent to council yesterday. And so here's a grant process that we put together if council decided to go forth with the, the program that you received in your packets, and, and also an email. Option one would be an application intake from the city clerk. I'm not sure if she actually knows about that. And then, application review by the mayor, a council member, and one staff member, so a team of three. Then the contract would get distributed by the city clerk. Finance would be in charge of fund distribution, and then also a compliance report follow-up, and then the final payment of the grant funding. Another option that I think has been discussed amongst council members is for the city to contract with organizations such as the, the Chamber for Business Grants, and then contract with a human services organization for additional human services funding. And the city has reached out to the organizations for, to see if they have contracting capabilities to just take, take on that, and there would be a small administrative fee. So, you know, besides deciding if we want to have the city process the contracts, or the applications, or an outside agency, we also need to decide, or council, the city needs to decide, decide about the total application, the grant award amounts, and then also the timeframe, so that we've, we, the city could potentially get the $12,000 in CARES Act funding from King County. And then Sean Tozer, the emergency management director, said there's about $130,000 that he thinks could be available. And then we need to decide if, what the increments are going to be. There was a recommendation for increments of 1,000 up to 5,000, or increments in bigger chunks that might be more meaningful, of 2,500 or 5,000. And then we also need to discuss the time range, the timeframe. Will there be one round of funding, or multiple rounds of fundings? And the, this is a very squishy timeframe to begin with, because the funds all must be spent by the end of October. So with that, I will leave it open for discussion.
And so I just, you know, in regards to contracting with other agencies with a small administrative fee, just keep in mind with this that that takes money away from the CARES Act and what can go to the local businesses, although, you know, the chamber's in need as well. And then the other item, oh, can you put it back up?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. No, 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 no problem.
Hopefully, I'll get my train of thought back, because it's been a long day. And, and then, you know, part, part of the, the thought of having increments between one and five was specifically because there might be a small business that really only needs help with a utility bill once. And they won't, there are some people that just won't feel comfortable applying for that, you know, larger amount. But also having that cap of about 5,000 provide some real, some real dollars. And then to also think about, you know, we don't just want to hand out to everybody that asks for money. What, part of the goal of this is to keep people in business and make sure that they are able to continue on. The last thing I want folks to think about when determining allocation is that, for the business portion, is that we also, under the CARES Act, you can provide up to two weeks of paid leave for those that have been out with COVID, or COVID-related leave. And that reduces the burden to the city's budget, but also provides that assurance for employees that become sick, because then they have, they don't have to worry about using all their sick leave if they become super ill. This is definitely a unique situation, and my initial recommendation would be to provide, you know, that 11,000 plus 60,000 to 70,000 for the businesses, set aside enough for possible employee leave, and then put the rest back into our human services grant program, which we hope to bring back at the next meeting in order to, it basically, it'll pretty much be our, our normal funding process, but with the CARES Act regulations in place. So that's just a little bit more background for folks to consider as you discuss the issue. Councilmember McHenry? You're on mute.
Sorry, I am having a
No worries.
So, um, a couple questions. Well, first, I, I think, you know, my first gut instinct here is I liked the first alternative, I think, of keeping it in-house. But in terms of allocating funds, I think, I just want to clarify from what I read, it sounds like this is somewhat retroactive. So obviously, a lot of businesses have already bought a ton of stuff, and they can, I'm assume, present some sort of list or receipts and say, here's what I've bought and what I'd like reimbursement for. Or it can also be used for things they still need to purchase, or bills that they have outstanding, they just need a little help. I was curious how that works, like, if there's any thought of, like, what that process is right now, what they would need to present for the grant?
That's a very good question. I would say supporting documentation. So for all the PPE, first, they need to write, you know, what they need the grant for, and then they need to write up a report to say how they used it. And with CARES Act, everything is documentation, documentation, documentation. So we would just need, if it's going to be a, they would just have to provide us with receipts on, on what they purchased, basically.
Okay, and I have one more.
First of all, thanks.
Sure. So I also think having the increments is good. I almost think our bottom, our lowest amount should be maybe 500, because I do agree that some businesses would be hesitant to apply. And I think even 1,000 is a lot for some. I'm not saying they're not spending that, I just think they might be reluctant to try and get that much, knowing that, knowing our community and how everyone wants to maybe not take as much so that the next person has some. I think a lower limit of 500 would be maybe better than 1,000.
Mayor, Councilmember Napland has a question. I don't know if you can see her.
Do you want me to stop sharing my screen? Will that help?
You're on mute, Mayor. Mayor, you're on mute. I apologize, I just needed, needed that slide for reference, so.
Oh, you need it back?
No, no, not now. Not now, just as I was explaining the thoughts. Councilmember Napland, and then Councilmember Iyer.
We didn't actually hear what you were saying for the last couple minutes, so we're saying, because we didn't hear you.
Okay.
You were talking for a while, and we didn't hear you.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure where I was at in the talking point, because I don't know why it went on mute to begin with. So what was the last thing you heard?
We didn't hear anything the last time you talked.
Okay, then, don't worry about it. Not worth it. At this point, if it comes back, it comes back.
Yeah. Um, we also talked, I, I had talked to Dana a little bit about the minimum, and the, I, I do agree, we want, we want to make sure people feel comfortable asking, and there might be some very small businesses that would not feel like they had enough documentation to ask for 1,000, but they really could use 500. And the other thing is, if we start out with maybe a 50,000 to $60,000, the 5,000 means we could only help 10 people. And, you know, obviously, there'd be some that would do the lower. So I do think the most flexibility, the better, for sure. I don't know what the workload level is. I, I think the last time when council had a committee to work on the dispersment for the human services, that worked really well. So I'd like to hear from, you know, those that worked on that team. Would you, would you like one council member, a couple amounts, council members to work on the team? Is there a way we can split up the work, workload? What would work best? Maybe Councilmember McHenry or Matt Iyer, of, of what ideas they have for that committee, because the workload would be higher, it sounds like, if there were a lot of applicants. So I'd like to hear, hear from that committee that worked on it. Councilmember McHenry, please feel free to answer, and then we'll hear Councilmember Iyer's comments.
Yeah, so the first round of human service grant stuff we did, it was just myself and Councilmember Iyer. And then when we did the, the COVID-related round, I think we had Councilmember Lengel in. And I will say that when we had that extra council member, and there was three of us, I felt, and I don't know if that's shared by others, that there was a much higher level of confidence that we came to the right conclusion. So I don't think it would hurt to have more. I think the only hard thing would be the scheduling, maybe, just depending, but that's my opinion.
Yeah. And to be clear, I'm fine either way. We're just trying to come up with the, the ways to make it most simple and as expedient as possible. So Councilmember Iyer?
My, my original question, could we see, could you put up Slide 3 again, with the dollar amount? And then, could you walk us through the, the breakdown that you discussed previously, Mayor, that you were thinking?
Yeah.
These are the same dollar amounts that the CARES coverage for sick leave come out of, is that correct?
Yes, it is. And so, you know, I haven't asked staff to separate up, you know, worst-case scenario, because again, this has to be spent by October 31st. So hopefully, hopefully, we won't have any more internally for, you know, obviously the health and safety of our employees. But we should probably put some aside that can be quickly distributed if necessary. My idea was to do the 12,000 of the King County CARES Act in between 60,000 and 70,000 of the state CARES Act on businesses, and then reallocate what's not for employees to human services, because our human services agencies are seeing more and more need. And when the eviction ordinances disappear, I think that's when we're going to see the biggest community need. And especially if, thinking about if, seeing the school districts that have gone to, back to online, there's going to be hundreds of kids in the valley that don't have access to food every day, if they're not going to school. And so making sure that we can, you know, continue to make an impact with those that are in desperate need of assistance here in the valley. You know, the allocation ultimately, you know, ultimately, it is what it is. It's going to do good in the community, no matter what. But that was just kind of my initial thought. And if we did 60 to 70 out of the CARES Act, that still provides actually even more human service funding than we were able to do before, and might provide additional sustainability for some of those nonprofits. Because we've got Hope Link that does rent assistance, we just got an email today that in the valley, they've provided over 40,000 in rent assistance since this started. So I know that the need is there. This money, the county money, I'm not sure if the county CARES Act money can be used outside of city limits, but the $5,000 that Kathy Lambert is providing us can be used for human services outside of the city limits. It's confusing, so I apologize if I've just
That, that was kind of the rehash, I was looking for. Could you go back one, one more slide? That had some, like, the other details.
One more?
Yeah, maybe one more, please. Okay, yeah, this is what I was
Councilmember Iyer, you went If you have any electronics near you, I suggest just trying to get them a little farther away.
Hello, hello?
You're there, much better now.
Okay, I don't know, I think maybe, I'm, I'm in a very hot room, so maybe it's melting, like, my Yeah, I, I think, I thought, so I thought the CARES stick leave, that went to the end of the year, that stopped, that is, that's done in October 31st, that's the last?
Well, the stick leave does go to the end of the year, but they're having us turn in all our reimbursements by October 31st. So that's when we, I don't know if they're going to extend it out, but we, we have to continue paying it till the end of the year.
Okay, yeah, because that's going to be very interesting. And if anyone doesn't know, that's a kind of an interesting program, where usually if there's, there's, you know, like PFMLA, that's paid by the state, and it's a, this is a program that's like literally goes through your employer. So it's, it's very, you know, seamless, and it's a, you know, and it's available to, you know, everybody, not just city employees. But it will be interesting this fall, and I think it's wise to have, you know, a decent set aside for that, because, you know, as we see, you know, it sounds like school's going to be touch and go, whether it happens. And then that, that program also has allotments for childcare, in, in a similar setup to the, to the PFMLA, actually. It's very similar in that, that regard. But, you know, in terms of the distribution, you know, we were able to get through it pretty easily. I thought three folks was good, but, but 60 to 70 in 5,000 minus increments, that's a lot of, that could be a lot, and I Not that the need isn't there, but I just don't know if that would be that many applicants. I mean, I think we should go for it, for sure, and I'm totally supportive of it, but just logistically, it'd be, that's a lot of applications, and you'd have to be, it'd be interesting to just see the structure of them, to understand how that process would happen. But in terms of the human services grant, I think that, that, the three council members did, and I, I thought it worked really well, and it was pretty painless. And, you know, we took the program to have flexibility in that regard. I, we, maybe we want to specify, just work out some of the details beforehand, so we could hit the ground running and know what we're working with when we're in the room. But I, I could see how you would want to trim it down if you have a staff member and Mayor on the business application review, just because that, that, you're having a lot of people in the room, and
Yeah. And it, honestly, again, it doesn't matter to me if it's three council members or one. It's, you know, primarily that, that overview, to make sure that you have time to do it. And it's easier to schedule with one council member than it is to schedule with three. So, but it, it doesn't matter to me either way, just to be clear. Councilmember Lengel, and then Mayor Portem Remington?
First of all, I'm definitely very sensitive to timing and staffing impact. And it can, to speak to Councilmember Iyer's point, it can be way more complicated than you estimate to get amounts of money out. And the timeframe on this is extraordinarily tight. And so, you know, that's, you know, fine, let's, you know, figure out the priorities. Frankly, in a lot of ways, that's the easy part. The Frankly, in a lot of ways, that's the easy part. The logistics here are very tight. And so, um, I'll just, I'll give you some examples of strategies that might tighten our timeframe. A role for the chamber might be to get, get, help us get information out. Because to get, to spend money, you've got to have submissions, right?
Oh, yeah.
And that takes time to do that. Now, you can put stuff in utility bills. You can, I mean, there's a lot of different ways, but you would be surprised at, with the business community, it can be a lot more complicated than you think. So that, I'll make that observation. The second thing is the, with respect to past expenditures, but even future expenditures, you know, there could be a way to design the grant application where people come in with their documentation right from the beginning. And if they want the money, particularly if they want a larger amount of money, there's, you know, and, and the directions are clear, we might be able to get some collapsing of timeframe for people to review things. Because my fear of going through a grant process and then these subsequent steps is we are losing time every time there's, there's, so it's not about, um, what I'm saying is does not eliminate documentation. It tries to get as much documentation on the most complete forward-thinking or complete thinking businesses. I'm going to speak to businesses first as possible. And that's where, you know, maybe the chamber or the rotary, it could be whatever. And then what, you know, but if, if the rotary or the chamber is involved, there has to be an understanding that this is not chamber money. It is money where there needs to be outreach to businesses, particularly the businesses that might not be inclined to join the chamber. There has to be some agreement around that. And if they get a little fee to do that outreach for us, it's going to be cheaper, quite frankly, I think, than us doing that outreach.
Yeah.
So I'll just throw that out there. And I did note in a previous CARES bulletin that there was going to be some money for some chambers. I think the, the grant amounts were like $5,000. So if it came, if $5,000 came out of this to get the, the chamber to go out there and get all our applicants and provide some technical assistance, so when those applications came in the door, they were complete and we could get the money out, it would probably be worth it to us.
Yeah.
So I'm just throwing out ideas. Now, I'm just going to jump ahead here to an example. And I'm going to use rent assistance, whether it's backwards or forwards. That does not have to be super complicated to document. Give us your request letter, give us a copy of your lease. If you got rent forgiveness, show us what you were able to afford to pay and we can do a calculation on this own business. Um, utilities, utilities might be something that's very easy to document. And, you know, especially with our accounts receivable, maybe we already know some of the businesses that have struggling, I don't know. But there's an easy way to document as well. I'm going to move on to human services agencies. I see a couple of different approaches. One approach, which is very valid, is to go back and look at who we've already funded. Right? We've just gone through two grant processes. And so one way to, to see if we can get that money moving quickly is to go back to them and say, give us supplemental proposals, where, you know, you can assure us that the money's going to be spent. We're going to have all our receipts by, before October 31st, so we can get those invoices in. And, you know, I'm going to use a food bank as an example. I manage downtown Pike Market Food Bank as part of the senior center that I manage. And in that situation, food banks are really well positioned to use money quickly because they can buy a lot of stuff, have bona fide receipts, they know who they serve. We have an existing contract with them. So in that scenario, maybe what we do is we amend their existing contract. We give them some additional money that we tell them to get those receipts in, buy those supplies, so that they're all intact and paid for by October 31st. That might be an example. Another example is these meals programs for these kids. You know, the network knows how much they cost per weekend. And the school district is a partner in that. And the school district can tell us whether those kids are kids in needs because they're, they're part of the free lunch program. Again, we can create a pattern of documentation with help with some partnerships. And I'm not saying give all the money one place or the other. But on human services, we've, we've done, I think, a good amount, a preliminary review of these organizations. And so if we really want to move money quickly, and I, I propose that we need to keep that foremost in our minds. Because it's a use it or lose it by October 31st. No matter how much money we give to people or we keep back for ourselves or whatever, those are all, for me, whatever everybody wants on those points. But I, I do really worry about timing and staffing impact. And if, to the extent we can consolidate some of these steps, I think we should really put a little bit of energy into thinking about that. Because I want you to think, we have August, September, October. Everything has to be done in 90 days and it is a lot harder to get money out than you might think.
It is.
And I would just say one more thing about human services, because I really care about human services and I think we're going to have a huge problem moving into the rest of the year. And that is that because of the way we do our grants with city money, we don't know to what degree those human services have started actually charging against our existing contracts. That's a question for them. But our money, we can extend. COVID money, we can't.
Right.
So under the auspices of use it or use it, use the COVID money first. Get that money out the door. If we need to extend our contracts with our agencies into the, into the first part of 2021, that is within Duval's control. We do not control COVID. So I know I'm going fast, but I'm just bottom line saying it's amazing how hard it is to get money out the door. And especially with the business community, you have to give them, I think, really clear direction. If you want rental assistance, give us these three pieces of paper. If you want utility assistance, give us these three pieces of paper. I mean, just give super, super clear direction based on what Dana needs to have high probability of reimbursement. And I think there are a lot more, because, because, you know, these folks aren't dealing with government. They're sitting there going, you know, how do I document my past losses? Let's make it super easy so they understand what will get them that 500, 1,000, whatever it might be.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lengel. And to that point, what council could choose to do is simply approve the program and let us administratively take all these ideas and simplify it as best as possible rather than approving the process, which is basically what Snoqualmie and other cities have done. But I do want to hear from everyone, but she made some really good points and I wanted to make sure that you know that that's also an option, which would allow us to, I mean, regardless of whether it's approved tonight or on the 28th or at the next meeting, if we have some level of consensus and flexibility to, um, to iron out some of those wrinkles, we'll have fewer council meetings to go through to get it done. So if we're given that leeway, we can, we can achieve those goals. And I can't see Councilmembers.
Let me, let me start, let me stop sharing.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Birdnicki.
Oh, I'm on. Um, so I would agree that when I was looking through how you apply, I, I was kind of trying to figure out how could we verify, you know, somebody loses X dollars or whatever the percentage is. And that's the part that takes so much time is verification of the application. Unlike, you know, human services, it's pretty straightforward. So I think if the application is very directed to the point where the business owner knows exactly what they're supposed to provide, uh, you can get that done. And, and, you know, trying to make an application very streamlined actually takes a lot of time and thought because there's all this assumption and you've got to figure, you have to give it to somebody, making it available, of course, online. I, I don't mind pushing this through to get it rolling because of the tight timeline and I'm sure you can work that out. It's a pretty straightforward, it's going to be a straightforward application. And I guess it's just a matter of verifying, verifying the information on it.
Ms. Mason?
Um, I can, I can alter the application to say, I think Doc's suggestion or Councilmember Lengel's suggestion was really good to say, if you're applying for this, this is what we, please provide this with your application. So I, I could definitely do that, but that, I think time is of the essence because we'd love to get all this information out to the businesses by Friday this week.
And I can tell you that just, just the acrylic shields, just the acrylic shields alone, the shields you see that people put up, it costs me over a thousand dollars to buy. I would say it's going to be close to 2,000 just to buy that for my little studio. So I'm sure they're going to come in and ask for some assistance.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's very expensive.
Right.
Mayor Portem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm happy to say, you know, let administration help, you know, have the flexibility to decide. My feedback would be, yes, let's set aside some monies for our own city's use with support employees. I think that's a good move. The rest, I'd divide 50/50. Human services, I would suggest with human services to simplify and get the money out. We've already had a process. We've already selected folks to receive that. That benefits our own community. We've already determined a percentage out of the 30,000 we gave before. You could use the same percentage if you wanted. Just ask them to update their application to fit the COVID requirements and get the money out as soon as possible. With business community, it's really tough. I'm not near smart enough to understand who's really failing, who, who's going to get the money, use it and go out of business anyway. But my guess is the chamber probably has a good idea of who has the biggest need and how to work through that. You always lose some control if you just give it to somebody. So you may want to consider having somebody from the city administration or from city council. Certainly those that have businesses or Councilmember McHenry who's already part of that group to be able to, to provide some council input as they're going through the process. The other simpler way to consider it is all of these businesses have utilities that the city provides. And to simplify it, you could literally have the chamber ask for applications or, or support us in that process and just simply take that number and divide it up and help support so that they don't have to pay their utilities. That gives them money to spend any way they want on something else. Because most of them are paying utilities. If not, they get shut off at some point where they have to pay back. So that would be a more immediate thing. But again, I'm just throwing out some ideas. I'm not pushing on it. I think there's a lot smarter people than me that can probably say, hey, here's the way we got to go.
Yeah, I think, I think we could get this done in the next few days based on these ideas if we just had a resolution approving the program. And taking into account all the suggestions of council and we could come back on the 28th and say, hey, here's what we wrote up and ratify that portion of it. So if council's willing to do that, but there's folks we haven't heard from, but it's getting late. If, if council's willing to do that, that would be great. You know, I've been respecting the process of council and other cities have done, just simply done the resolution through, you know, the emergency powers of the mayor. And that, that would, you know, being able to do that would simplify it, but I think we could incorporate pretty much all of these ideas. And I really liked Mayor Portem's suggestion of focusing on the utility because that makes it simple and equitable for anybody that applies. The question I would have back, and this is just a logistics question, is what about those home businesses? Does that apply to a portion of their utilities? And then what do you do there? Because I know there's a lot of home business, businesses that are essentially based out of homes that are struggling as well. So that's just a question. It's Mayor Portem Remington.
You know, Mayor, that's the big question because I do think we have a lot of home businesses that we could support as well. So I'd love to find that balance with utilities. We could probably do that and say, hey, you know, we're going to do X, a percent. You know, maybe it's, I don't know, 10, 20%, I don't, you'd have to look at the, how many businesses apply total. And so, but that would be a nice way again to do it because everybody uses some utilities. How much for a home uses utilities? I don't know, but we could probably figure that out and move it forward. I'm comfortable with you coming back in a, in a week with a proposal. I'm more than happy to, to make a motion here after folks have talked. But I do have a question. It says CARES Act funding small business grants. Are we adding to that human, small business and human services grants? So it covers both?
Um, the intent was to bring back the human services and like utility billing, you know, rent assistance at the next meeting. Because that's a little easier to dole out. If you want to amend the resolution to just get it done now, I'm completely okay with that. We were trying to separate the two so we didn't have too much, too much confusion. So if that's what the group wants to do, I think we would be very happy with that.
So we have small business and human services. How about for city employees for helping cover? What would we call that?
Um, you would probably call it COVID CARES relief or something. I don't know what you would technically call it, Dana.
I, I don't think we actually need to put that in the resolution because that's, that's the city's reimbursement. So we would be, are you talking about the emergency sick leave that employees, yeah. So that would just be, we would apply for reimbursement, so I don't think it needs to be included.
Okay, so we would set some money aside to cover that and then the rest could go. Well, Mayor, you can see if others have input. I don't want to jump too quickly, but I'm happy to, to bring forward the resolution here with some amendments.
So I haven't, we haven't heard from Councilmembers Hoag, Iyer or Naplund? Councilmember Iyer?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Let's do it. Let's do this.
Okay. Councilmember Hoag?
I have a question before a couple of comments. Director Mason, did you say that you'd like to get something out to the businesses by this Friday?
That's what we were hoping. We were trying to get, yeah, and we would have to get something translated. So if you wanted, I could alter the application and then send it to the FAC for review and comment before it went out. And of course, the mayor and. Or just send it to the whole council.
I'd like to see it as descriptive as possible so that the applicant, that, you know, that the applications can be processed, you know, without any delay. And I also think that there needs, there should be really a way to reach out to all businesses, not just chamber members.
No, that's exactly the intent. So, um, you know, we have a list of all the businesses in the city. So we, I don't think it would be a challenge to, too big of a challenge to separate that list of businesses, which there's a lot of home businesses that are not members of the chamber and utilizing our, our existing, you know, media outlets and the chamber to get the word out. I do like the idea of chamber reviewing the applications just to do the checkmarks. But if, if council's willing to give the grace, we can sort that out in the next few days. But yeah, no, every business has to be, it can't be, it wouldn't be right to, to limit it to chamber members because chamber is losing members at this point as a result of the financial situation. Dana?
I was just going to say, we can use that business license system to send it to everyone who has a Duval business license within city limits.
Yep. Councilmember Naplund?
I prefer Dana Mason's suggestion of having a mailer. That's what another city did.
Yeah, we'll still do that.
Pretty easy. Just to make sure, we just, I just never want anyone to feel like it was, it was a chamber. And that it, just to make sure everyone knows about it and.
It's pretty, yeah, pretty simple to do a mailer. I mean, that, that's part of it is you want everybody to get access to it.
And then, um, the, the other thing is just trying to decide the amount. Are we going to decide the amount tonight? Because for me, I would like to make sure that we hold back enough for kind of our worst case scenario for amount that we may need for our employees. And then if we end up not utilizing it all, we can just have a, a second round additional to top out the human services. And so choose a dollar amount potentially for the small business grant and then whatever's left. You know, if that makes sense. I don't know if I'm making sense, but I, I just want to make sure we have enough to cover what we need for our employees. And we can always have a second round to, you know, get the rest out the door for human services at the end.
Yep. And the equally reaching out to businesses is a high priority, absolutely. And Mayor Portem Remington had mentioned a 50% number. Is that, it, does that seem like an easy formula that folks can get behind at this point? Councilmember Naplund?
Would that take into account the amount that we've already given for human services or is this just?
It would be completely separate. In my opinion, unless Mayor Portem Remington had a different thought, I was taking it, the way I took it is that this is CARES Act specific. If that's incorrect, please correct me, Mayor Portem.
No, I'm fine with that. Fifty-fifty on the money that we have available in the CARES Act now.
All right. Councilmember Iyer? Good? Okay. McHenry? We're good? Okay. So we, Dana, you'll have to correct me. I think we'll just need to, I'm not sure if we should make an amendment on the fly. We can, I'm wondering if we could take a motion that's a preliminary motion to the final resolution so that we can get this going by Friday. But Anne Marie, do you have any feedback while you're on the line?
So I'll put my video on. Sorry. So I don't know if you necessarily need any amendment to the resolution as written. I mean, you could take out that one whereas clause that's already flagged as being related to human services. But aside from that, it sounds like you're going to be addressing that separately. So you might as well leave the rest of it as is.
Okay. That makes it simple. Thank you. Councilmember Iyer?
Could we potentially just acknowledge that we're comfortable with the mayor proceeding procedurally?
Thank you. I think you were garbled, but I think you're asking consensus for the mayor to proceed with getting the development of the program taken care of as we've discussed. Is that correct? That's what it sounded like you were starting.
I'm completely confused. What are we voting on? I mean,
Nothing yet.
Hello?
So, yeah, you're better.
Can we just, can we just acknowledge that we're okay with the mayor doing this administratively and just skip the resolutions? And
No.
No, you have to have the resolution to establish it.
Well, then do this resolution and the rest of it can be, I mean, you were saying that there was an administrative act under the emergency that you could do. Sorry, I guess I'm
It's okay. Councilmember Iyer, it's, we all have technology issues at times. Councilmember Lengel?
Okay, so let me, okay, what I thought you said earlier was that you all were going to straighten out like this consolidated concept. And we would vote on it on the twenty eighth. Is that what you were saying? Or what you're saying is you want this resolution passed now without any of those details determined?
Either or, the, Ms. Thomas is going to have something to add. As far as being able to meet deadlines, it would be nice to have the resolution passed tonight and come back to next Tuesday with the details of how we're going to finish developing the program. So the resolution tonight would just be basically acknowledging we're going to do this program. We support the program. If you approve the resolution tonight, as to Councilmember Iyer's point, it would be saying you have faith in us to work together. We can have a quick finance committee meeting and getting these details together so we can start getting the notice out by the end of the week. Because we are getting close to August and really we have to have money out by early to mid September in order for them to be able to meet all of the standards necessary in the CARES Act.
So Mayor, I think if we can work on the application with the Finance Administration Committee and if we need to make any adjustments to the resolution, bring it back Tuesday. As long as I think we're making progress and not waiting until Tuesday to do it, I think we'll be fine. Because then we can already get our mail merge ready. We can have the application ready. And then all we have to do is turn the key on the resolution on Tuesday night. Just understanding that we really need to finish it up Tuesday. And then we can begin a media blast and send out the mailing on Wednesday. I mean, well, yeah, we'll lose a couple of days, but I think it's hard to pass a resolution, at least tonight. But I think we can get there for sure by Tuesday.
And if that works for everybody, I'm fine with that. So I guess the choice is resolution tonight, thumbs up. Resolution Tuesday, thumbs up. Okay, we've got it. Simple. Thank you, guys. We'll move on to the next topic. Agenda Bill twenty-sixty-three interim floodplain ordinance for discussion and or decision, community development. Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the record, Laura Thomas. So I'm assuming that you've all had hopefully a chance to read the wonderfully long ordinance that has been drafted for the floodplain regulations. I won't go into a lot of detail except to say that we do this update every seven to 10 years. It's mandated through FEMA, which is now obviously Homeland Security. They began the process, they first start the process with updating the firm map. So in your written report, you saw that they become effective August nineteenth. That process actually began, I believe it was in two thousand six or seven. So that's how long it took them, okay, somebody's giggling. Two thousand six. And it goes through this process and there's, you know, basically technical memorandums. I will not bore you in that. But what happens is that in general FEMA or the federal government is always not knowing what other states' processes are for passing policies. So just as an example, if you get a notice, you know, in, you know, February, March, April, and you have to work with an agency and you don't even get like kind of a draft policy moving until April, you have COVID on top of it, it's really hard to go through a process with Planning Commission Council and hold public hearings. And even more so, you actually have to go through a sixty day review with the Department of Commerce as well. And so about six weeks ago, Department of Ecology requested a meeting with FEMA to say, hey, a lot of our communities, and this is statewide, it's going to be really challenging to meet these deadlines. And King County is in August. So we were a little bit luckier than like Snohomish County, who was in, had to have theirs completed in June. But they'd started working with them last year. So it was kind of like this incremental approach. And so FEMA basically said, you know, we're really sorry if you can't have something adopted and ready to roll on August nineteenth, you'll lose your NFIP program status. So that put, you know, the hackles up honestly of the majority of cities across our area. And so what we do when things like this come up is we'll do a, what was called an interim ordinance. An interim ordinance is allowed by statute, but when you do this, you still have to hold a public hearing within sixty days. There's still a process. So essentially what we're going to do is we're going to do this twice. And the reason is, is unfortunately for us, we could have technically met the guideline by one day. However, I didn't want to take the risk of adoption on the seventeenth. And we actually publish and have an effective date of our ordinance. And I didn't want to take the risk of our ordinance not actually being effective, but only approved. I don't want to give the federal government any reason to take us off their NFIP rolls. We don't, we have quite a bit of floodplain, obviously, but the majority of our floodplain is within city-owned properties for the most part, like McCormick Park. And the floodplain also goes to our back door through, obviously, I call it Lake Cherry Valley during the winter. So what we did is, is we're going to go ahead and look at doing this as an interim. We'll hold a public hearing in September. And when you looked at the documents that I provided you in the packet, you'll note that there's essentially a checklist that we go through with, on a federal level to see where we're compliant and where we're not. And then we work with our FEMA representative and he actually does the code sweep and cleanup. So there really isn't a tremendous amount of work that staff has to do except for process it. Go through Planning Commission, go through council, go through commerce, you know, and issue CIPA and obviously go through the community. But I do feel really lucky because this time they did provide a model ordinance and they really did work more collaboratively with us than the last time. And so we didn't have to do as many changes. I've also emailed this to Eileen. And so she'll be looking at it and be able to provide any sort of input so that when we have our next meeting, if there's anything that she, you know, that she sees that's a red flag or, you know, there's something that I missed, then she'll be able to help us with that. So I'll go ahead and take any questions at this point from council.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Thomas? Okay. Are you frozen? I think everyone froze. Can anyone hear me?
Nice job, Laura.
Can, can anyone hear me? Yeah. Okay, it froze. So I can't, I can't see any hands. So did anyone have, okay.
Hey, if everybody read all those letters from FEMA, which I can't believe that I did, they were super, super complimentary of our staff, particularly our Director of Community Development. So it should be in the record.
It's kind of what happens when you volunteer to be on committees at a state level.
It is. I can say that from experience, too.
Sorry, I'm going to be all red.
Okay, it's not looking like we have any further discussion on this tonight. And so, okay, I've lost track a little bit here. Laura, do we think we need to approve this tonight or can we do this at the next meeting? It's the next meeting, right?
Correct.
And now everybody's frozen.
And the next meeting.
Okay.
Mayor?
Okay, perfect. All right. So we'll go ahead and move this to the next meeting for final approval then. And we just have one item of business left. And thank you, guys, for bearing with me as I get punchy. It's been a long day.
No.
So if the mayor can't come back on this one because she seems to be having an issue, Dana and I can help, but honestly, our city attorney is staffing this portion, but we're also available for the conversation.
And the Mayor Portem can finish the meeting. She's back.
Okay, I'm back. I'm back. Sorry about that, guys. I'll turn my video off, but we have one last item of business. Agenda Bill eighty-twenty-sixty, ordinance adopting new section four dot oh four dot two-two-zero of municipal code employee contracts for discussion and or decision.
So if everyone remembers, we had this on the agenda at the last meeting where the ordinance was introduced, but there were some council members that wanted a little more time to review it. So this is the exact same version that was presented at the last meeting. And it's ready today for adoption if you so choose. Or if you want to put it off or not adopt it, that's up to the council.
Great.
Mayor Mike Remington?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, I was one of those that voted to go ahead and adopt it. And I don't think we had the number of council members support it. And I'm glad it actually didn't pass last week. I've had a chance to learn more, talk to folks. There's been some new questions that have come up. I don't know if we've had opportunity to hear from staff and the mayor yet fully on this. I do see that there's potential to have some unintended consequences. I'm very supportive of the overall idea and having a ordinance that, you know, a little more specific so we don't run into issues that we've had in the past. But I do think we could use a little bit more time on this to be able to talk to directors, to hear from them. I think that's really important to do. I'd like to be able to hear from the mayor as well. I, I don't know if I'm ready to lay out all the potential complications here, but I do think there are some things that need further discussion on this before we finally settle on language on it. And I may be wrong. Maybe we can, you know, hear from directors that are here and the mayor. But I do think that there's some additional input that would help us avoid a few pitfalls.
I don't know if the mayor can see you.
Yeah.
Does my little raise the hand work? Probably not. Okay.
I just don't know if she can see anybody right now, so.
Oh, okay.
You guys might have to do a shout out if you want.
Okay. Respectfully, I don't agree. I think we need to pass this ordinance. I think we know through other types of discussions why we need to have this ordinance. The only piece of unfinished business that I'm aware of is that, and it really doesn't conflict with the ordinance at all, is that we have, we have existing contracts that are not in compliance with things. And those contracts have to be dealt with. And, and the underlying reason is that those contracts and the financial implications of those contracts never came to council. And so this ordinance requires that employment contracts must get approved by council because from a statutory perspective, we are the ones that have to approve compensation. That is a statutory thing. It's not debatable unless we want to give away that authority. And this council has never done that. So that's why I think the ordinance needs to be passed. Now, there's a second step in this, which does not have to, in fact, should not be part of this ordinance, which is dealing with the underlying contracts right now that do not meet our statutory obligations to review compensation. And those contracts, I've read everyone that's been provided to us, those all have a consistent thirty day termination clause. So what I would like to see is the second step is the mayor, presuming passage of this ordinance, that the mayor comes back to us with how she wants to proceed with those functions that are included in those contracts. And so since an ordinance has thirty days to take effect, she has at least thirty days to come back with what, how she wants to handle it. So the council can do what it's required to do by law, which is approve the compensation. And, you know, it could be something as simple as taking the existing contracts and amending them so that we know exactly what we're dealing with financially so that we know we're in compliance with any collective bargaining agreements. It could be that simple. It could be, you know, if the mayor wants to get more elaborate. I mean, it is up to the mayor how she wants to come back to us. She could come back with different contracts. Or the mayor could say, okay, we're going to amend these contracts and we're going to come back with something more robust in terms of job descriptions or alignment of activities as part of the budget process. There's a lot of mixing and matching that the mayor can choose to do when she comes back to us. But the fundamental reason for this is that we have a statutory obligation as part of our oversight functions to approve all compensation that goes to employees. And in our current situation, we have things that are not in alignment and they should not continue out of, in, with not being in alignment. And so when the ordinance was, you know, what happened here, let's remember, is the council discussed this. They asked us to come back. Specifically, Councilmember Naplind brought this forward as a concern. Council asked us to come back with something and this was the cleanest way that we knew to become back in alignment with those RCWs. So that's why I think the ordinance needs to pass. And it doesn't preclude the mayor coming back and helping us get back in compliance with those RCWs. And, um, and it doesn't preclude the mayor coming back and helping us get back in compliance with those RCWs. In fact, I think, you know, I'm sure she's thought about this. She was very eloquent in her last, at our last meeting, talking about how she inherited some things. Nobody's disputing that. We just want to get it fixed. And we want to get it fixed in a way that we know we don't have any issues in audits or anything like that. We want to just get it fixed for where we are now. So that's my, my pitch and I hope we can pass the ordinance.
Thank you, Dot. Anne Marie?
Just a point of clarification. So the ordinance is in effect after five days after publication. You could change it if you wanted. You could have a 30-day effective date. But the standard for ordinances, except for certain types of ordinances that are not applicable here, is five days. And that's the way the ordinance is currently written.
I guess I was thinking about the 30 days after publication kind of thing. So thank you for that clarification. I don't care if there's a 30-day.
Yeah, it's five days after publication. So if you published it tomorrow, that'll be five days after that. If you didn't publish it until 30 days from now, there'll be five days after that.
Okay, whatever that is.
We try to decide if, if we're passing it, when do we want it to take effect? Or how much time the mayor would have to renegotiate some of these items. Councilmember Brood Nicky?
So I would like to have more time to discuss it with staff. I can only speak from my experience in the past and the, the moments when something like this would have not been a good thing for the city. And, um, we have a system, strong mayor system. And I think as we go about changing and altering things to adjust, to accommodate whatever we're trying to fix, we have to be careful. And like I said in the last meeting, y'all are good people. But I've been around long enough to have seen with others how things can get out of hand. My fear is this becoming political because we're really giving our, ourselves, us, council, authority to a degree. And I really like to talk to the staff about that. I really like to understand that before I put my support behind something that gives me more authority. And so I just have to keep that sort of balance in mind because I have seen in the past what could happen. And there's just some things that you have to just be careful about. And so I just would like to do more discussion with staff and more thought behind this because my thought is, you know, when I'm gone and, and in the future, if we have a situation that comes up that I've had to deal with in the past, not one, but a few, that this action does not give that authority to someone who may not have the best of intentions. And then we have consequences. So I, I do have to consider this on a deeper level and I have to do a little more research on it.
Councilmember Ayer? We're gonna try you one more time.
I, I think councilmember Hoag had something to say. I hadn't, uh, didn't quite raise my hand. Are we doing a round robin here?
No, no, no. I thought I saw your hand up. Councilmember Hoag?
Well, I, because I was involved a little bit, being on the finance committee and reading through this. And this isn't giving us any more authority than we already have. It's, it, we already have this authority. It's just putting it in writing because it hasn't been followed, but.
Laura?
I think the only thing that I wanted to weigh in on, at least at this point, is, uh, we are transitioning from one attorney to the next. And we really do want to bring back some options for council, you know, related to this policy. So I think councilmember Lengel somewhat was, was alluding to that as well. You know, it can be one of our first, you know, our first priorities with our new city attorney. I think if I had to say realistically, I think it, it's at least a 30-day exercise because obviously we want to, you know, have discussions with him. We want to talk to the directors that are impacted by these employee contracts. We want to actually talk with the employees as well. And so I think that, you know, potentially one thing you could do is if you pass this policy this evening, is maybe make a motion also to, to ask us to come back within, you know, a certain amount of time and bring some, some options back to council. I think that's how we can, you know, realistically work, work through it. I think there is a little bit of hesitation, you know, from administration, the mayor. I just read the policy for the first time, honestly, this weekend, but I was out of the office, obviously, you know. So it was my first opportunity. And I definitely understand where the council's going with this and we understand that. But I think we do need some time to try and figure out, you know, are we going to bring, what kind of contract are we going to bring back and to what councilmember Nap, or I'm sorry, councilmember Lengel said, are we going to do it through job descriptions? Are we going to do it through contracts? There are a lot of different things that we can bring back to council. And I think the mayor does need the opportunity to work with directors, administration and the employees impacted by it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Napland?
I appreciate that input. One thing I want to mention, and I've mentioned it before, the detail, the default of state law for a strong mayor scenario is that council determines and sets the wages, the conditions of work, the benefits. That has always been the council's role in a strong mayor situation. If the council wants to delegate a certain amount of authority to the mayor, then that is the council's decision. And so currently, council has not delegated any of that authority to the mayor. And so as it stands right now with this, without this ordinance, the mayor does not have authorization to, um, provide additional compensation because there's no provision for that at all. And the default by state law is that that is determined by council. And we have not set any of these additional add-ons to pay. So the question is, we are in a situation where there are add-ons to pay that are, were not approved by council. So for me, if we want to say, you know, let's not sign anymore and before the end of this calendar year, we will sort out the existing ones, I would be fine with that. I just don't want any more additional contracts signed. I want it before the end of the year, before we go into a new budget, I want to make sure we have this straightened out. So if there's some hesitation to pass this tonight because we're worried that somehow it's going to void all the contracts that are outstanding or all the, you know, memos that have been written or the verbal agreements that are being paid out, I, I would be fine of just saying, let's make sure we get this straightened out before the end of the year. And starting today, it's established that we are reiterating state law that no more contracts, no more verbal agreements, no more memos to give additional pay. But I do think it's very important that we establish by ordinance that we have not delegated this power to the mayor. And nowhere in code have we done it. The default, we don't even need this ordinance to be realistic. But we, but unfortunately, we do because this was happening. So, um, I could give many examples and I won't go into it, but there's more than I have been discussed in council meetings. And so I felt very strongly that this needed to be put in place just to establish it. But if, if we want to, within the ordinance, say that any contracts or verbal agreements just need to be sorted out before the end of the year, I don't know if we could get that written up. But, um, I do think this ordinance is important. And the sooner we get it in, the, the better, in my opinion. And we worked hard on this and I, I really don't see any reason why we need to delay.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayer?
Yeah, I definitely, um, definitely agree with a lot of the sentiment that councilmember Napland just spoke to. I mean, I've definitely, I, I get that there's a, uh, confluence of events happening right now that make it difficult to get through this and figure it out. And I too would likely be, uh, open to the idea of, um, as long as we get reassurance that this is something that's going to come, that's going to be dealt, that's going to be handled and, and straightened out by the end of the year. But I, I do, I too share the frustration and the misunderstanding of the process. It's not a common practice for councils to, um, to, uh, to, uh, give out that authority. It, it's not an authority that's really in question anywhere else. So I think sometimes it, I think it strikes a nerve with council because I think that in terms of regular practices, you know, this correction is really on the right side of like common practice with other cities, other strong mayor cities. This is, this is, this is, and so it strikes a nerve in the fact that, you know, I understand the confluence of issues.
Sound kind of went haywire there. It's okay.
Hello, testing?
That's better. It's just when it goes haywire, it really goes haywire. It sounds like you're landing a jet. Okay, try again, Matt.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know where I cut off, but it's frustrating to me because it's, it's an adjustment that, that should, if folks are not familiar with it, that, you know, I, I think it's pretty common that, that it's a common practice that, you know, these types of contracts need to go to council for approval. And I share the frustration with other council members and I, and, but I feel like administrations, I feel like the mayor has heard us and is appropriately working on it. And I think we should, I, I'm fine with, you know, allowing folks to figure it out because to un, to un, uh, I can't think of an appropriate way to say this, but to undo the, where we're at, it takes a little time. And I guess take some, uh, some, quite a bit of thought and I appreciate that. So, yeah, thank you.
Other council members. Councilmember McHenry?
Well, I appreciate what everyone said and I support this ordinance. I'm not sure what the consensus is right now if we're looking at changing section four to say 45 days or the end of 2019 or something like that. Or what, what exactly we're working toward right now at this moment.
So, uh, go ahead, Dot.
You're muted.
Yeah, there we go. Um, I think I, I'm going to ask Anne Marie to correct me if this concept is not acceptable. It seems to me that what we could do is we can pass the ordinance and in that ordinance motion, direct the mayor to come back to us with her proposal on how to manage these work tasks, whether through employment, employee additional contracts or some other method, and do so within a specific timeframe. And, you know, to me, it's, you know, 30 days, 45 days, whatever, you know. This is not meant to be prescriptive of administration's method. It's meant to have that be fully disclosed to council so we know what the terms of employment are. And so we can be sure that tasks are compensated for equitably. And we don't know that now. And we also don't know if our existing contracts are fully in compliance with other policies and requirements of the city. And so the, we have to figure out a way to get to that point. And to get to that point, we need to start with making it clear what we're doing with this ordinance and then taking those next steps, respecting the mayor's role, to come back with specific options that she is comfortable with. So Anne Marie, if that needs to be embedded in, in a separate motion perhaps, directing the mayor to come back to us within a specific timeframe, that's, maybe that's a method. Maybe we simply change the number of days for effectiveness of the ordinance. Maybe that's the easiest way.
So the.
But if she wants longer periods of time, then it seems like maybe you have to have a separate motion with a directive of some sort.
So a couple of things. Number one, if you adopt the ordinance as is, that doesn't necessarily change any of the contracts that are already out there. Doesn't validate or invalidate them. You can then address those separately. So if you want to go ahead and move forward with the ordinance today, you can do that. And then it will be in effect five days after publication.
Right.
Could change it. And if you want to give it a longer effective date, you can push it out for 30 days or whatnot, but that doesn't really change what is in effect right now. So if you're concerned about the possibility that contracts might be entered into within the next 30 days and you can just move forward with adopting the ordinance today, you don't necessarily need a motion to direct the mayor to, to come back with, to you with this other information. I think that the branches of city government can work together with the understanding that that's what you're looking for. And the administration branch of the government can simply just do that and come back to the council at a later date with the information that you're looking for. And then you can address any contracts that might be out there and how you're going to move forward with contracts in the future, already having your ordinance in effect.
Okay, so based on that information then, and I would like to see the ordinance provide the mayor a little more flexibility. You recommended a different effective timeframe, which I think you said was an additional 30 days. Is that correct?
You, you can do that.
Yes, I, I just want to make sure if that's what you want to do, that's, that's an option for, for consideration in a vote. Or we simply pass the ordinance the way it is now and we work with administration to cancel contracts that have never been approved by council. We have that authority too, by the way. We all know that. We've been through that discussion. And, but cancel those contracts and have her bring back what she is, feel will work for her for the tasks that were otherwise provided for. So, um, I like really clean things. So I'm still inclined to support passing this ordinance. And I believe we can work it out with the mayor to clean up the contracts. That's my, my view. That's all I have to say about it.
I think all of this does is it, it restricts entering into new contracts, which is what Anne Marie was trying to explain. So delaying it would be allowing there to potentially, I don't think there's a gray area, but to allow gray area to extend 30 more days.
Right.
All this is, is you, no more entering into new contracts. So existing contracts we need to deal with, but Anne Marie is absolutely right. What, what this ordinance says is just, it's restating state law and saying from the effective date of this going forward, don't enter into any new contracts or authorize additional pay unless you come to council. So I completely agree with Anne Marie that we can deal with those. We don't even necessarily need to mention them, except, you know, clearly we're, we're reaching and understanding. And I would prefer that, I, I would give flexibility to try to solve this before the end of the year and not, you know, try to, you know, make them try to sort out all of these additional pays in 30 days. I think that would be really difficult. So just as we go through the budget period, through the budgeting and through the end of the year, just take our time and sort this out. We'll have the new attorney here and he can help us sort these things out. All this ordinance is doing is it's restating state law and say, from this day forward, when it goes into effect, we're not going to enter into any new contracts. So unless there's council members that want the mayor to enter into new contracts, there's really no reason to delay moving this ordinance forward. That, that's how I feel about it. But I don't know if someone wants to make a motion to, to vote on this, but I, I mean, I will leave it at that.
You know, we heard from you initially, councilmember Remington, but
You want to hear my wrap-up thoughts? You know, I don't have any issue with the intent of the ordinance or the content as it's written. And I think that both Councilmember Lengel and Councilmember Napland have done a really good job of, as well as Anne Marie of helping to couch why this is being done. So, so what's my concern? Why would there be any delay? For me, it's a little bit about process. One of the concerns we've had as city council is there's times things move forward that, you know, we haven't been asked about and that creates a frustration. You know, when I hear that some of our, our directors, who are part of our administrative staff, only had a chance to read it this weekend. And I think we're all aware of why that is. I mean, there's, you know, been some, some health challenges as was shared. So for me, it was just making sure that we've had a chance to ask that question. Do you have input? Is there something we missed? I think that most councilmembers I've talked to feel very strongly for all the right reasons. This has been worked on very hard by our, very well, I might add, by our finance administration committee and Anne Marie to work through the language. I, I just, I think this is a important enough to take that little extra time to just simply ask directors, is there anything we missed? Is there, you know, unintended consequences potentially? I, I don't see huge ones. I don't, I wouldn't fault council for saying, hey, let's just move this forward and pass it. But I, I think part of that is a respect as well to just, you know, and, and I think the mayor's on board with saying, we're not going to add anything more. We, we get that we need to come to council. This ordinance makes that really clear. But Matt, that was, that was my concern. Sometimes it's as important how you do things as what you're actually doing. And, you know, that came to mind and that's why I wanted to say, hey, can we, can we wait a week or two weeks and just simply ask those questions? Councilmember Iyer?
I mean, I think, I think it would be, I, I propose that we, at a minimum, do our standard three touches, get it to the third touch. I mean, I, I think to some extent, I mean, council's been on tap for everything that's come up at every point with this city. We're doing, we've done weekly meetings from mid-year, every year till the end of the year, it seems like. And I'm fine with that. And I, I think that's great. I'm glad we can do that. And we frequently get things on Friday, Saturday, Friday evening at three, four, five o'clock, Saturday morning, which is, I appreciate where they're coming from. I get it. That's a reality we deal with on a, on a bi-weekly basis, weekly basis potentially. And 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 I, and I guess, you know, in terms of how productive are all these statements? And I should, I should walk it back in terms of, you know, hey, let's try to, let's try to generally put it out there and, and, and put a pause on it, take another week, give folks time to, to digest it and and at a minimum, give it till, till the next touch. Cause that would be our minimum of three touches. So, and I think, I feel that there is an understanding and I mean, I feel council's angst for sure, but I, I'm comfortable at a minimum, wait till, till the next council meeting on the, on the regularly scheduled council meeting on August. I don't even know what day it is. Beginning of August.
Yep. Councilmember Nap, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Lengel.
Well, I think for the record, this is the, this will, that will be the fourth touch on this.
Probably is.
Because Councilmember Napland brought it forward as an issue. We've had other meetings on the implications of the contracts that we have now, which are problematic and, and have no issues for us. That's, that's although technically on a council meeting, that's another piece of information. We had this last time, last meeting where we decided to delay it. And now we're going to go to number four. If that's what everybody wants, fine, but it is not going to change the underlying state law. It is not. So we can, we can mull it over as much as everybody wants, but it is not going to change our underlying obligation and authority. That's the fact.
So this was up for discussion or decision and that's up to council. If someone wants to make a motion, the concern with that, of course, is that, you know, it could pass or council could not pass it. And so it makes, it muddies the waters a little bit if all we're trying to do is say, let's give it a little bit more time and we've already turned it down. Doesn't mean we can't bring it back, but, but so I'll certainly entertain a motion if, if somebody wants to, to see if it'll pass tonight. If council feels like you, you want to just, you know, bring it back, first meeting in August, we can certainly do that as well. I appreciate the frustration that this has been worked on a lot and very hard. It does not change state law. So it's just a matter of where city council wants to take it. I, Councilmember Napland.
I just want to say, if, if you feel strongly enough that you aren't comfortable voting on it, I would always respect a council member that says they want that third touch. If you don't feel like you've had enough touches, I a hundred percent will wait on making any type of motion because I, I think it's important that council feels comfortable. And if there's a council member here that feels like they've not had enough touches and that we haven't met our minimum touches, I, I don't want to make a motion to move this forward if that's the comfort level. So I feel comfortable. If anyone doesn't feel comfortable and feels like we haven't had enough touches, I will leave it at that.
Councilmember McHenry.
I mean, I'm comfortable now, but I would echo some of the things Councilmember Napland just said. I would be fine adding it to our meeting next week. But, you know, I don't know if people have strong feelings that it should wait until the August meeting. I just, I do think we've had enough time with it, but I respect if some people wanted more time, but I do think we could take care of it next week instead of waiting until August.
Yeah, I'm fine seeing if we can just add that as well. Councilmember Hoag.
I'm okay with bringing this back for next week. I do have a question for Anne Marie. On section four, the effective date, when you read that, and I feel like I've talked about this before in past ordinances, but the way this is written, is there a deadline as to when it has to go officially in the newspaper? Because the way this is written, it could go in the newspaper in December. Right? There's no deadline.
So there isn't an official deadline. And I've seen it happen before where a city forgot to publish an ordinance and so they didn't publish it until a few months later. That just means that it's not in effect until five days after that. So you could just postpone your publishing date. But one thing that I would just suggest, and this is just a suggestion, you can take it or leave it, but you are going to have your new city attorney contract on the agenda at the next meeting. And if you want to discuss this item at that meeting, I think it would be helpful to wait until your meeting in August so that he has time to get up to speed because he's not going to be up to speed on this issue by that time. We're planning to meet with him after the contract is executed so that we can get him up to speed on some various items. And that would give him a chance so that he's not sitting in on your meeting on, on the twenty-eighth, shooting from the hip on some of these items. So that's just a consideration that you guys might want to take moving forward.
Well, good point. Thank you, Anne Marie. Well, I'm always a little hesitant when I've given input that others may disagree with and you're running a meeting. But I, I'm fine either with next week or August, but Emery makes a good point. If, if we, you know, I think Laura Thomas shared that as well. It does give a chance for a new city attorney to put eyes on it and, and I, I don't expect there to be a change. I think it was well done and well written. You know, my, my point again was just simply wanting to have time for staff to have input as well. I think process means a lot. I don't know it's going to change anything. I think the most, one of the most important points here is one that Councilmember Napland brought up. We made it crystal clear that we do not want any side agreements. They need to come to council. That needs to stop. Not tomorrow, but today. And in my talks with the mayor, she said she understands that and, and I really trust that as well. And, and so with that, I, I would recommend, I think it makes sense to try to bring it back in August. I think not all members will be there at our next meeting. We do have a quorum, but not all members can make it. I do think we'll lose one more at that first meeting in August as well, but I do believe we'll have more than our next meeting. So I know that this isn't the perfect answer for everybody, but I will just say, you know, again, anyone can make a motion on this. I don't have an issue with that. But my sense is in listening that most folks are out of respect or okay, waiting for a little bit before we bring this back. And not everybody sees that as the best answer. But it seemed to be a majority that felt that that would be okay. So unless there's a motion to go ahead and bring it up and pass it this evening, which I'm happy to entertain, we'll plan on bringing it back. You know, at the earliest next week or at the latest at our first meeting in August, which would allow us to have the attorney. Yes, Ms. Wyfka.
Um, I was just going to say that because I have to notice the special meeting next week for next week, I need to notice it tomorrow or by Thursday at noon. I kind of need to know if you want it on the agenda for the twenty-eighth or not, so that I can put it on the notice.
So are there objections to August fourth? Is that the first meeting in August?
Yes, August fourth.
That would allow new attorney. It looks like Councilmember Hoag has input first.
I prefer to do this next week.
Okay. Councilmember Iyer.
I think a month ago, when I indicated that I was going on vacation in the first two, first two weeks of July, and I wasn't going to be in the first two council meetings in July, I think I might also said I wasn't going to be in the August meetings. I can arrange to be there August fourth. Are we missing many other council members in the first August meeting? Or is that tent?
I think right now the only other person I know of is Councilmember Brudniky will not be in attendance. Is that accurate?
Well, in that regards, then I would, I would respectfully defer to Councilmember Brudniky if she would prefer to be there on the twenty-eighth, if she's going to be there. I'm not sure.
I don't think she's going to be there for that one either.
Prefer to be on the fourth. So, you know, out of respect about trying to, because I, I wasn't planning, I had something going on, but I can arrange to be at the twenty-eighth meeting for, for, for this and
Councilmember Brudniky, so now we're down to two dates.
My, what I want to do is actually interview staff to find out, you know, what their thoughts are because I haven't had a chance to really discuss with them. So I'm only holding off on making a decision based on principle or myself and to do more research with staff. I'm not really thinking about contracts or side deals or any of that sort of thing. I'm just one to be sure that when I sign off on something that solidifies more authority for myself as a council member, that I, I did that in the right direction. So I, I don't know because I want to ask the staff what their thoughts were. Because if, if they, but if the council wants to vote tonight, I have no problem with that. I just need to know for myself, principle-wise, what the staff thinks about it. I've had over ten years of watching things happen and go down. And remember now, deals can go the other way as well. It's, it can, it can go with councils, not this council, but I'm saying it can work on both sides. And so I'm just trying to see the balance of this initiative that we're doing to make sure that it's, it doesn't give too much authority one way or the other. That's all.
Diane, just a quick question for you. Are you gone both the twenty-eighth as well as the fourth? Gone both. So
If I can get a hotspot on my phone, but my phone won't, I don't think my phone will do it where I'm at. I would bring my phone with me, but I don't think my phone is, my city phone will do it.
Yeah, you can call in and vote remotely, obviously. Councilmember Hoag, you had your hand up?
In light of the fact that we're going to be missing more than one council member at the next two meetings, I, I propose we vote on it tonight. Would you like me to make a motion or do we need?
You're more than welcome to, to make a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Bill twenty sixty B, ordinance creating new DMC section employment contract.
So we have a motion on the floor? Is there a second? Councilmember Iyer.
Are we, it seems to be in conflict whether this has been the third touch and whether it requires a
Just spending our rule on free touch. I'm guessing we probably talked about it enough that it's probably at least that's my guess, Matt. I think we've at least touched it three times. And I think folks are fairly clear, you know, on, on what the language is and so on. Councilmember Lengel, again, we're looking to see if there's a second on the motion that's on the floor.
I can, I'll second it. I mean, I can give, if we want to go further discussion, I can provide background information on staff's previous knowledge of this ordinance and the process that was used, which did include staff.
We, we do have a
Do you have a second?
We have a second now. I think because of the way this went, I'm going to ask.
I'll do a roll call.
Do we still have, Jody, Jody, will you please do a roll call for us?
Absolutely. Councilmember Brudniky, nay. Councilmember Iyer?
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry?
Aye.
Councilmember Remington?
Me.
Councilmember Hoag?
Aye.
Councilmember Napland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lengel?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion passes.
Our motion passes. Laura, one of the things I would just request, you know, obviously there's been a lot of good discussion tonight and we would be looking for the mayor and staff to bring back how we process this now with contracts that don't line up. We understand it may take some time. So that would be very helpful for council to have the, the mayor, after consoling with staff, come back and say, here, here's our plan. We didn't put a timeline on it, obviously, but certainly we, we understand it may take some time to, to work through any negotiations and other things that may have to happen. Certainly if, if staff does have specific concerns that they want to bring forward, we can certainly look at amendments and other things. But that would be extremely helpful to us as city council to have the mayor come back with a plan on what to do with those contracts that are not in alignment with our new ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. I think what I've heard, I'll just kind of recap, but what I've heard is that we'll work through the mayor and administration office and also with our directors and our impacted employees and we'll bring back some options. We'll have the mayor, he'll make a recommendation to council on, on those options and maybe even a recommendation for one specifically. What I have also heard is that you are providing us actually a really, a good amount of time, quite honestly, which is giving us until the end of the year. But what I will always say But while, what I will always say as a director and partial administrator is, I'm not going to wait until, until October, November. I think we just need to continue to work through this, you know, over the coming weeks. And, you know, I'm really appreciative that you're giving us that amount of time because I really do want to make sure that we're working with our new city attorney. And then if we're going towards, you know, job descriptions, it, it just gives us enough time to redo that. So I can tell you on behalf of administration and even the mayor, we thank you for giving us this time.
Thank you. And I really do want to end by recognizing the hard work that was put in by our Finance Administration Committee, by Anne Marie to help put this together and I, I appreciate that. Well, we do not have an exist, executive session this evening. And with that, we will adjourn our city council meeting. Thank you, everyone.